Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Budget Hearings. I am Councilman Kohari Mosley and I chair the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. For this hearing, we will hear from Pittsburgh Water. I'd like to invite those from Pittsburgh Water who are at the table. And as you get settled, I ask our Budget Director Peter McDevitt to give a brief overview of the department.
Thank you, Councilman. Pittsburgh Water is entering a new era, one with renewed emphasis on public health, the environment, and our responsibility to serve as steadfast stewards of the vital water services our region relies on each day. To ensure they can continue this momentum, they recently embarked on a strategic planning project to redefine their mission, vision, and core values. Pittsburgh Water has a seven-member board. Councilperson Erica Strasburger serves as the Vice Chair of the Board. And just as far as the operating budget goes, Pittsburgh Water pays the city $1.2 million in indirect costs for fuel and fleet maintenance.
Thank you, Director McDevitt, and thank you, Councilman Wilson and Councilwoman Warwick for joining us. I believe we'll be joined by several other members throughout these proceedings. And now for Pittsburgh Water, please introduce yourselves and your titles.
Good afternoon, I'm Will Pickering. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority. Oh, it's Pittsburgh Water, still technically Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority. I didn't use that acronym, we're not using it anymore.
Good afternoon, everyone. Ed Barca, I'm the Director of Finance for Pittsburgh Water.
And I'm Jen Persoudy, I'm the COO and the CFO.
Thank you, and feel free to begin your presentation.
Thank you, Councilman. So as Director McDevitt mentioned, we are entering a new era and our rebrand is an embodiment of that change. As of November 7th of this year, we are now doing business as Pittsburgh Water. And really, the opportunity we felt was multi-fold. One is that there was a lot of brand confusion. The logo PGH2O has been with us since around 2014. However, we continue to refer to ourselves as PWSA. We found actually through surveys, a lot of customers referred to us by different names, the Water Company, City Water, things like that. So we wanted to use this rebrand opportunity to bring all of the services that we provide under one umbrella, that's our water, sewer, and stormwater services, and really find clarity in that brand that we are all things water for the city of Pittsburgh. In terms of those mission, vision, and core values that were referenced at the top, we are very proud of our five core values of stewardship, ethics and integrity, accountability, safety, and equity. And I won't go into our mission and vision verbatim, but you know, one core feature I like to call out in our mission statement is our focus on future generations. A lot of what you will see today in this presentation is a product of a lack of investment over many decades that we are trying to catch up and get on top of. And we want to be the leaders that are known for thinking about that next generation to make sure we're leaving them a water system that is in much better shape than we have found it here in the last 10 years or so. And in terms of our vision, you know, we really want to transform the water system itself and be known by our customers as stewards of public health and the environment. Go on to the next slide, thank you. So just a quick snapshot, I won't get into all of these stats. When we talk about the number of customers, these are the number of accounts between our water and sewer accounts. You can see it's about 116,000. There are a subset of customers we refer to as sewer-only. So these customers are receiving their drinking water from other drinking water providers and utilities, primarily the Pennsylvania American Water Company in the South Hills, Wilkinsburg Penn Joint Water Authority in the East, and a few customers are connected to Westview Water. Stormwater-only customers are customers. These are accounts that don't necessarily receive drinking water from us, but they do generate stormwater off of their property and they pay a stormwater fee. So as you can see, we have over 5,000 of those accounts. When we think about our impact on an average day, we are serving over 500,000 people. So you know, that takes into account everybody coming into the city using our water, sewer, and stormwater services. Our employees now, we total more than 400. A handful of years ago, we were hovering just over 200. So we've had a tremendous amount of growth to catch up with those investments that I referenced that needed to be made and are continuing to be made within our system. Our drinking water treatment plant can produce up to 100 million gallons per day, but on an average day, we're producing about 65 million gallons. On the assets, you can see nearly 1,000 miles of water lines. If you were to straighten them all out, that would be the distance from here to Orlando. On the sewer side, even more mileage that would cover from Pittsburgh to Denver. And then often forgotten are some of the assets that are critical to our system. These are manholes, fire hydrants, and valves, and catch basins which are storm drains that are taking the water from the surface and putting it into our sewer or stormwater systems. This next slide is a map of that service territory that I mentioned. The light blue section is sort of the core of the city of Pittsburgh. They are combined customers that get water, sewer, and stormwater services from us. The green tip there in the middle, sort of north end of the map, is the Borough of Melville. We actually own the drinking water system within the Borough of Melville, so there are direct customers. We do water main replacements and lead service line replacements in those areas. And then in those lighter dotted areas, those are the areas of the city that receive their drinking water from another utility. So this slide is touching on where a huge portion of our capital improvement plan has been focused and will be focused for the next few years, and that's on our water reliability plan. This is a series of investments within our, some on the footprint of our water treatment plant, but focused on the production and distribution side of our drinking water. Within the last few years, we completed relining and covering the Highland 2 reservoir in Highland Park. That is the reservoir that is fenced off and covered. We rehabilitated two large diameter mains that feed the Highland 2 reservoir, so going from the Washington Boulevard area and uphill to Highland Park. Those water mains nearing about 100 years of use prior to the major rehabilitation we completed. And we are also constructing a new pump station in Highland Park right off of Melon Terrace, adjacent to that Highland 2 reservoir. It is really the first, what we call, vertical project, a new facility that we have constructed in over 20 years. A multimillion dollar investment to make sure that we have reliability between our Highland 1 and Highland 2 systems. And at a practical level, that means when there is a power outage or interruption in service, we should be able to float the water from one side to another without our customers knowing the difference. When you don't have that interoperability, you have things like low water pressure that can result in boil water advisories, which we obviously want to avoid. So you can see here that last bullet, you know, we're adding 56 million gallons a day of redundant supply to about two-thirds of our service territory, which is going to be a tremendous service improvement when that pump station is online here in about a year and a half. In terms of environmental compliance, I think this is likely the third year I have been able to touch on our real intentional focus on environmental compliance. We have a Chief Environmental Compliance and Ethics Officer that is responsible for advising our staff, contractors, and Board of Directors on ethics issues, whether it be things that happen at a regulatory level or even gifts and things along those lines. They are also responsible for our expanded environmental compliance program. So a real focus on our regulatory compliance. We have a really qualified and skilled team leading that under our CE CEO. And then we have conducted a lot of training within environmental compliance to make sure that every employee, regardless of where they work, are aware of their obligations to protect public health and the environment. We've made a lot of improvements and this will continue to be a focus of the organization here for the foreseeable future. And with that, I will turn it over to Jen, who's going to touch on our lead service line replacement program.
Thank you very much, Will. One program that we are proud of and are naturally recognized for is our lead service line replacement program. Our CEO participated and was invited to the White House for their Get the Lead Out panel for that discussion. We have now completed our seventh consecutive round of compliance testing that is well below the EPA action level. We continue to replace lead service lines in coordination with water main replacements. When we're in the road and replacing a water main, we want to make sure that we're hitting all of those service lines that may be connected to that main, as well as our standalone neighborhood contracts. Since July 1st of 2016, we have removed over 11,000 public lines and over 8,000 private lines. Our lead service line replacement program is a very large program. And so we are always looking for funding opportunities to be able to expand that work and to get more work done in our service territory. One thing that Pittsburgh Water is very grateful for is the $17 million grant that we received from the city of Pittsburgh to use for those lead service line replacements. We are happy to report that that construction is complete and we have replaced over 732 public and 708 private lead service lines with those American Recovery Plan funds. So thank you for that. Another excellent partner to Pittsburgh Water is Penn Vest. We rely on this state program for a number of our projects. But when we talk about our lead service line replacements, it's our small diameter water main and lead replacement programs, again, kind of marrying those two together. We have been able to receive 318 million in low-interest loans. And when we say low interest, it is much, much better than we are seeing in the market when we talk about revenue bonds. And we've also been able to receive $81 million in grants. And that's the best kind of money because that is money that we do not need to pay back. Next, let's talk about our customer assistance programs for 2025. We do have our bill discount program. That's 100% reduction on fixed monthly water and sewer charges, plus an additional 85% reduction on your stormwater fee if you are an eligible customer. You are eligible if you're equal to or less than 200% of the federal poverty level. We also have our hardship grant. That's an annual grant of $450, and that is for water services as well as stormwater, excuse me, sewer services, wastewater services. So as Will said, you know, in some of our service territory, we have customers that are both water and wastewater customers. And then we have some folks that are wastewater-only customers. You would be eligible for $450 for either one of those services. Winter shut-off moratorium, we continue to have this program. It ensures that customers maintain water service during the winter months. So all verified low-income customers are just automatically enrolled in this program and we guarantee that water will not be shut off during the winter months. We offer flexible payment plans. We provide a $40 credit to reduce past due balances and forgive past amounts when on-time payments are made. So if you call us and you set up that plan and you continue to make on-time payments, we will give you that credit. And then finally, lead reimbursement program. So customers may receive up to 100% of a reimbursement for the costs of replacing private lead service lines. So if you or somebody that you know may be eligible for any one of these programs, I really encourage you to call our PGH2O cares team. They are a fantastic team of folks that are at many community events. You may have seen them at some of yours. They can be reached at 412-255-2457 or online at PGH2O.com/cap. Another program that we are excited about, it's a pilot program that we've rolled out, is our line repair and water conservation program. So this is a pilot program and it will last until the funding runs out. Current, we had started with $324,000 and we typically on a maximum spend about 1,300 per property on this program. So to date, 152 income-eligible customers have received the in-home repairs and water-saving devices installed. We provide free repairs on the private side, service line leaks on the exposed plumbing, and/or installation on water-saving devices. This further broadens PWC's water conservation efforts while also lowering our customers' cost of bills when we have unusual high consumption. So again, if you're interested in this program, please do reach out to our PGH2O cares team at the number provided earlier. When we talk about customers that are eligible for our bill discount program, we're going to look at this middle line here. That's our typical residential customer, someone that has a 5/8 inch line. They typically use about 3,000 gallons of water. For 2025, their water rate will be $34.40. Wastewater would be $14.03. 2025 stormwater would be $1.52 for a total of $49.95. I think it's important to note that PETA Pittsburgh Water does not intend to raise rates in 2025. We're getting there, I guess, my brain. Now let's talk about residential customer impacts that do not qualify for our customer assistance programs. Again, we're going to focus on that middle line. It's 5/8 inch line or meter with a typical usage of 3,000 gallons. 2025 water rate would be $67.52. Wastewater would be $22.69. Stormwater would be $10.06 for a total of $127.27. And now I'll turn it over to Ed to talk more about our budget.
Thanks, Jen. Go to the next slide, Pete. So next, we'll transition into the 2025 operating budget. This still is pending approval from our Board of Directors, but we do anticipate to have that approval during our December board meeting. Within the operating budget itself, the total budget is roughly $336 million. However, if you take out the Alka-San component of our budget, the total budget of just PWSA funds only is $234 million. As I mentioned, Alka-San, we are a pass-through entity for Alka-San, so we bill on their behalf and then remit those monies to Alka-San. So you can see that there in the darker green on the slide is really that expense shown there within our budget. The next largest expense following that is our debt service expense. When you talk about Penn Vest and these large capital improvement plans, our water reliability plan, lead service line replacements, all that makes up those debt service costs there that we see, but is also like other like utilities when you talk about hard infrastructure that we're replacing. Following that is our repair and maintenance line within our budget. You could think of this as service restoration, urgent water repairs, those types of large expenses that really aren't capital in nature but do have a large impact on our operating budget that we must continue to fund. Following that is what we're going to call our human capital. Will mentioned we have over 400 employees at Pittsburgh Water. So we can talk about salaries and benefits and those types of items that mix up the red there for the human capital line. Following that is business administration. You could think of that as utility costs, you know, software costs, those types of things to keep the organization moving and moving forward. And then the last line there is something we call our distribution system improvement charge. What this charge is, is you could think of it in finance lingo as pay-go, pay-as-you-go, rate-funded capital. What that means is essentially dedicated funds through our rates that we put towards capital improvements. It's something that we must put forth and expend on capital improvements per PUC guidelines, or those funds are refunded back to customers. So it's a verifiable charge that we have on our rates. Next slide, please. When you talk about budget highlights, just to reiterate a few bullet points here, you know, this 2025 proposed budget does continue to strengthen the organization since this team has been here. We've had two rating outlook upgrades and actually one rating upgrade from a separate agency. And so this 2025 budget continues that effort. You talk about addressing a legacy of disinvestment. That's not something we're going to solve overnight, but year over year, as we come back for these meetings, we're going to continue to talk about all the good things that we're doing to help mitigate that disinvestment. And again, this budget addresses that. And then last, we talk about the PUC and other legal financial metrics. You know, this proposed budget meets all of those as well as we're required to do. Next slide. Next, we'll transition into our capital improvement plan. Next slide, please. Before we talk about the proposed budget for 2025, I do want to highlight a few accomplishments that we've seen here in 2024. There's many to talk about. I pulled out three here specifically, but again, we have a large capital improvement plan that, you know, impacts all of our customers in different ways. Lead service line replacements is one that we continue to highlight. While we're not mandated to replace lead service lines anymore, you know, our board and our leadership team has made a commitment to replace all lead service lines. So we're going to continue to follow through on that promise and to move that program forward. The next item or the next, you know, project that you see there is Dragoon Way and the Haverhill Street Stormwater GI improvements. This is a partnership we've had with the city of Pittsburgh and, you know, we're happy to, you know, to tell everyone today that that project is fully complete or nearing full completion. And a piece of that is our GI efforts that we've seen here, you know, through Pittsburgh Water's efforts. And the last that you see there is the Highland Reservoir Pump Station. Will talked about this earlier, but this is one of our largest ongoing construction projects right now. And it will bring, you know, redundancy to two-thirds of our system, which, you know, is definitely a highlight in and of itself. Next slide, please. Looking forward to our capital improvement plan, like I mentioned for our 2025 operating budget, this plan here that I have shown on the screen is pending our Board of Directors approval, which we again anticipate having, you know, approval in December. But what I do want to highlight is over the next three years, we are looking at almost a billion dollars in improvements. And that may seem like a large number, and it is, but when you talk about our water reliability plan, which has been in the planning phases for years, we're starting to hit that construction phase for those very large projects. We're continuing our lead service line replacements. That's another big piece or another component of that. And in addition to that, you have our GI programs and all the work that we're doing on the sewer and stormwater side as well. So it does seem like a large improvement, and it is. But again, these are improvements that need to be made in order to keep our system redundant, but also to plan it for the future. Next slide, please. I want to elaborate a little bit on, you know, the responsible investment that, you know, we're making. You know, Jen talked about it a little bit for lead, but there's really two charts shown here. The chart on the left shows since 2018, all the external funding awards and the various agencies that we've received funding through. You know, the vast majority is through Penn Vest, and that makes sense just given the nature of Penn Vest as an infrastructure authority that funds improvements, you know, like what Pittsburgh Water is doing. But just to highlight that, I mean, really, the key takeaway is over $100 million in grants have been obtained through various agencies since 2018. This year alone, we've obtained over 33 million in grants. And a large component of that is money through the Infrastructure Investment Act or the bipartisan infrastructure law, however you want to refer to it, as well. So we are capitalizing on those funds as much as we can, given the urgent need of our system. And if you move to the right there, looking at the chart there in the green, that just highlights generally where those improvements or those monies have gone. The vast majority, no surprise, go into water main replacements and lead line replacements, but your water reliability plan is in there along with some other critical components, you know, of our system. Next slide. Just to round out our presentation here, specifically looking at capital. Again, we do have a diverse capital plan. We can have a whole session just on that if we wanted to, but you know, you talk about stormwater and all the intricacies that go with that and our large water reliability plan and things that we've mentioned here over and over again today. It's a, you know, it's an all-encompassing plan that we're proud of here at Pittsburgh Water. One of the things I do want to highlight throughout a statistic here is over 50% of our capital improvement plan is funded with external sources. The largest is obviously Penn Vest, but you know, really what I'm keying in here is that we're doing everything we can at Pittsburgh Water to mitigate rate increases to the degree that we can, right? Talk about grants, 1% interest loans. I mean, those things do add up over time and it's something that's critical for us to continue to move forward specifically with our capital plan. And as I mentioned here, both budgets, you talk about operating and capital, do support a strong credit rating that we're proud of with Moody's and S&amp;P. So with that, I guess, turn it over for any questions.
Thank you so much for the presentation. We'll start with Councilman Wilson.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, thanks Chair. Thanks for calling me to get this started. I don't have many tough questions, but did you all see the big cup of water that the councilman showed up with?
It's making me thirsty, just like.
Is that Pittsburgh Water?
It is not. It's whatever our water coolers are.
Okay.
Yeah. At a salty lunch, Councilman. At a salty lunch.
Well, if you're not, well. Hopefully the bitterness doesn't travel into this meeting. I wanted to ask you a couple of questions about the, you know, into the future. So you have replaced a ton of lead lines and there's a lot more to cover. What is, what was the future like for that? Like, when's the end date?
So our goal as it stands is to get all of the lead out of our system by 2027. That's for our residential service lines, which is the bulk of our system or residential, especially non-residential properties are less likely to have lead in general, but we will eventually catch up to those as well because it's a regulatory requirement. One of the reasons why we want to get it done quickly is not just to remove the public health risk, but now is the opportunity to go after the grant dollars that are on the table through the Infrastructure Investment Act that Ed mentioned. So there's really only a few more years that those grant dollars will be available here for us to apply to Penn Vest for, and that's we're going to aggressively go after those and get the job done.
Do you think we'll get all the lead lines in, I guess, PWC in Pittsburgh, but in your?
Within our service territory, right.
I'm sorry, in the Pittsburgh water map?
Yeah, that's our goal. It's ambitious, we're going to have a, it's going to require a lot of construction over the next two construction seasons. 2027.
2027.
So that's, we have the funding in our plan to get us close or there.
Great. And then you were saying there's other lines that have lead in it, but it's not as much of a risk to the public.
So commercial properties are generally larger than residential and just a time of construction, they were less likely to have lead. That's not to say that there are some commercial properties that do have lead. We're trying to track those down. That's sort of the phase two of the plan is to try to find those in commercial properties. We have a definition of commercial property that's considerate. So if a commercial property has residential above, we're treating it as if it's residential because we want to make sure that whoever is living above that commercial property, you know, has that lead line removed. But for a purely commercial structure, we're, that is the phase two to get to those lead lines.
Yeah. And then you're doing a lot of mainline work. How is that, how's that going?
So on average, it kind of varies depending on the funding level and the projects that we've have designed. But on average, we're getting to about 1% of our water mains per year. If you do that math, that's a 1% replacement cycle. It's going to take us 100 years to get to all of them, but it's still a massive amount of work to get to that 1%. So we're trying to be really smart about where we are targeting and being strategic on which mains we replace. We've actually learned age is, it's a useful metric, but it's not the only metric. We're looking at how many times the main has broken, critical customers that are served off that main. Does the main have lead lines? We want to get to those sooner while we have these programs going on to remove lead. So there are a lot of different metrics involved in which mains get replaced, but we need to have that sort of maintenance level replacement at about 1% per year to keep the system in good order.
You think that's a good rate?
It is about the industry standard.
1%?
Yeah.
Interesting. And then how is it going with locating leaks? It seems that there's been a couple, couple instances in my district where, you know, it was like long, everyone thought for a long time that it was groundwater. And it was groundwater, but it wasn't, there was a leak up the, up the street. And it seems like it was, there's like some daylight on that now.
Yeah, I would say within the last few years, we've really, we've invested in equipment and personnel to go after those really difficult leaks, as you can imagine with the topography. Sometimes you'll see a leaked surface in, on one street and really it's originating two, three blocks uphill.
Yeah.
So we do have a leak detection equipment and we're also investing in proactive monitors that can detect leaks before they surface. So they're called, they're leak loggers where we're installing them on our valves. And what they do is they monitor the system in the middle of the night where you're not expecting any water usage. And if it hears that water usage, it sends our team an alert so we can go and proactively try to find leaks.
Where are you installing those valves at?
So the valves are all existing. This is a piece of equipment that sits on top of that valve. And we've deployed them, you know, system, we haven't gotten to every neighborhood. We're in a couple of different neighborhoods now. Jen can elaborate.
It just like picks up like on the minerals or ions or something?
It's an audio signal.
Yeah, it's a sound profile that our folks listen to. And so they go in in the morning and between hours usually of 2:00 and 4:00 a.m. is when the leak logger will kick on and listen for those leaks.
But you're like taking up the street to put those in?
Yeah, well, you take off the box for our valves and then put it down.
Oh, there's a box, yeah.
Yeah, so it's an easy, it's a location where we shouldn't, unless the valve's been paved over, which happens.
Which happens.
You know, but we're looking for valves that are accessible where we can, can put those loggers.
I like it.
Yeah, we've found a lot of leaks already. It's already proving to be useful, something we're looking to deploy more broadly.
Yeah, that's essential in the discussion of, you know, landslides, especially, you know, just ruling out, you know, any leaks is, yeah, so good. Nice. And then the leak detection equipment, is that what you're talking about? There's other equipment you've?
There's multiple ways of doing it, right. Our folks can go out.
And that is new as of like the past couple of years, right?
I would say, yeah, we have more equipment and more crews able to respond. Whereas, you know, a handful of years ago, we were just reacting. Now we're able to do some proactive, more investigative work to go after those ones that have been bugging the community forever that we've never been able to find. And so I think that's the big change, Councilman.
Yeah, I mean, it's confusing because for a long time, you know, it's in, you could try and convince people, not you, but like people could be convinced like, well, maybe it is groundwater because I live on Spring Hill. It's named Spring Hill for a reason. And so it's, you know, it's, it's encouraging that you're taking this seriously. So how many? So how many of these sensors have you installed?
We have over 200 currently in the system and we have plans for 400 more.
How many, would that be like all the, all the caps you could take off and put them in or?
Wouldn't be the entirety of our system. So we are being strategic about where we are putting them now, but we would look to replicate that program again, more than likely next year to be able to, to deploy even more. They can be sentinel or you can move them around your system. So that's, there's some options for us to be able to do that as well.
I just have one more question. It relates to all the new meters that you're installing. And obviously there's one case that stands out in my, in, you know, that I was aware of where, you know, there, there was a curb stop that had to be repaired. But, you know, because they couldn't turn on, like, you know, to turn, to change the meter, they got to turn the curb stop off. But even past that one that I was aware of, that ended up being more involved, there were some other ones that came to our attention. Is that a common problem that you're now replacing a lot of the curb stops because they're, they're just bad? The valve's bad and is, is that, is that?
It is, it is fairly common.
Is that a cost that you have budgeted for?
We, we do carry those in stock. It's something our in-house teams can accomplish, so we don't need to use a contractor. We, we try to operate it. You don't want to break it, which you could break it in an off position and have the, the customer out of water. So it is, you know, as, as we know, housing stock is older. A lot of those valves were installed at the time of construction. So sometimes they're a hundred years old. They hadn't been operated maybe more than a handful of times ever over those, you know, 100 years or so. So unfortunately it is common.
Yeah. Okay. But I appreciate you walking me through the questions that I, that I had. And thank you for all the work and I appreciate you all being responsive every time, you know, my officer or myself, we reach out. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I want to give the floor to Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thanks for being here. And yeah, also, you know, always appreciate working with Rachel and Rebecca and everyone's super responsive. It's very, it's great. I, I really just have one thing that I wanted to bring up and that is, so as, as you may know, you know, at the, at the city, we're doing a lot to just, you know, work around affordable housing and in particular eviction prevention. You know, we passed recently sort of, you know, funding for a lawyer for the day and, and whatnot to, to help people both avoid, you know, work with their landlords to avoid eviction and then if they are, if an eviction proceeding is started so that they have representation. But in, in those conversations, one thing that's come up with folks at Rent Help PGH and the Housing Justice Table and whatnot has been eviction because of water bills. So where the, where it's not a failure to pay rent, but it's a failure to pay the water bill, but the water bill is going on the, is, is, you know, it's the landlord's responsibility. So I guess I wanted to ask if there was any way to sort of have, because I, I think with other utilities, the bill goes with the part, right? Like if, if you don't pay your, whatever the, the other utility is, it's sort of, it's you, right? It's your own responsibility just to kind of, and, and I understand that there are discount, discounts and whatnot for lower income folks, but if there was a way to make the water bill stay with the tenant so that, in other, in other words, the, the failure to pay the water bill would be between PWSA and the tenant and not between PWSA and the landlord because it is resulting sort of not infrequently with landlords saying, well, I'm just going to evict this person because they're not paying their water bill. So I don't know if you have any thoughts about that.
So within the last year and a half, I want to say, we, we did change our rules to allow that direct account holding with the tenant so that the bill is in the tenant's name and the responsibility is directly between the tenant and us. Now there needs to, there, I need to go back and, and speak to our customer service team before I misspeak, but I, I believe the landlord may need to opt in to that relationship, that, that change, but it's a movement toward the more typical utility customer relationship than we've had previously. Previously it was, we could send a courtesy bill to the tenant, but they, they needed to work it out with the landlord. And the arrangement now is that, you know, tenants can, can pay the bill and be directly responsible and things like the debt, you know, don't necessarily convey to the landlord. So I think maybe we should discuss it with the nonprofit partner you mentioned to see if we can, you know, come up with a solution.
Yeah, because my understanding is that even, even though the bill is in the tenant's name, is that ultimately if they don't pay, like, so say they don't pay and then they move out or they don't pay and they, right? The bill stays with the house, like stays with the landlord. And that I think is, even if it's in the tenant's name.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Like then the landlord's like, the landlord is seeing the bill that they get about, or whatever, right? They get some notice that the bill isn't being paid and, you know, the concern is that the, they just think, well, what if they never pay it? Then I'm going to, you know, and it's just going up and up and up. And so landlords are sometimes opting to just evict over the water bill. Whereas if it were not at all the landlord's responsibility, in theory, right? They wouldn't, they'd be like, well, that's PWSA's issue to deal with.
Okay. Let me get clarity on that and I can follow up with you.
Okay.
Because it's important for me to understand as well.
Yeah, so thank you. That's all I have. I mean, otherwise, again, just always, always appreciate working with you whenever we call something in, it seems to get quick, fixed quickly and, you know, whatever that, so thank you.
Thank you, happy to hear it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Charlotte, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilman. Sorry. So I'm really glad you guys are here today. I, I said this to you before, Will, but I want to reiterate this. We don't always do a lot of things great here in the city, but the, the turnaround that PWSA has had is remarkable and is something that should be celebrated every single day in this city. When I started working for the city, it was not a, it, it was a certainty that PWSA was going to become privatized. And the question was just who was going to make the offer? It was, it was, there was no way forward and you all were able, in your organization was able to overcome that and defeat what were, you know, certain, certain odds to become the organization that you are today. And, and really that, that needs to be exclaimed constantly of just how impressive that has been. And that was, you know, also including a massive lead line program that you had to pull off, upgrades to the system. When I, when I, again, when I started working in the councilman's office, it was, you know, almost a weekly thing that we'd have a boil water notice or a major main break or something like that. And the service was not reliable. And that is, we are, in six years, we are not in that system at all. And it is, you know, I, turnarounds like that don't happen in government very often. So you, you all should really be applauded for, for the work that has been done there. I also want to share Councilwoman Warwick's recognition. Your, your team is awesome for us to work with. We love, you know, we love Rachel and we're, we're, we call her a lot, but she always gets back to us very quickly and always has great answers. And I take advantage of, of asking Rachel to, to do the personal reach outs to the, the customers. You know, because she, I think she does, she has that great personal touch there and very much, you know, very much appreciate that. And if, if that is the customer service that all the city could provide, I think people would have a different faith in, faith in government there. Really the, the one thing I did want to talk to you about is as we do lead line replacements and, and just general infrastructure work, the paving list. So I have been arguing with our Department of Mobility, not arguing, but arguing, that the, that Domi needs to do a better job of publishing to the utilities what they plan on paving in, in future years and working with utilities to coordinate that. And that has been, you know, I'm not the first person to, to say this is a, is an important thing, but as I talk to other utilities, it's something that comes up so consistently that if you could all coordinate on this and we, you know, as utilities, you could only pay the cost of the work that you needed to do and then share the cost of the paving, how much that would benefit, benefit your ratepayers and our taxpayers. And I, I, I cannot, well, I guess the question that I want to ask you is, is talk, talk to me about that. When do you guys put your, when do you plan your infrastructure for future years? I know that you don't move, you know, you may, may not know five years in advance that this is a street that you're going to, to be working on, but you also can't move quickly when we give you the paving list in March and say this is the street that we want to pave. What kind of timeline would be helpful for you? When, when do you need to know?
Do you want to take that, Jen?
Sure. Yes, better coordination is definitely something that we would look forward to. We would want the paving list maybe a year or two in advance. We do have a lot of our projects maybe in design at that time, so we kind of know where we're going to be in those, those years. But I don't know if you wanted to add more to that, Ed? You know, we certainly go through all of the permitting process that the city requires of us and follow the right of way manual and make sure that we are coordinating where we can with other utilities as well as Domi.
Second that, yeah?
Yeah, I'd say the majority of the conflicts are probably on the small diameter water main replacement program. And as Jen alluded to, it takes, depending on funding source, you know, a, a year and a half or two years where we're looking at discrete locations. At that point, we're, you know, sharing where we believe we're, we're going to be. So, you know, one, one year out would be fantastic where we could, you know, just get that level of visibility. But as you alluded to, we're, by the time we get it, it's difficult for planned construction projects for us to, to move or, or rejigger our list of planned projects.
And I, and I think that's, that's kind of what I hear from other utilities, although we did, we met with Domi earlier this year, they mentioned that, they, they kind of said that they don't need it as far in advance or the, their, their view was that the utilities don't need it as far in advance as we have been saying that they do. But it's refreshing to hear from you that it is, you know, two years is probably where, where we'd really like to see it.
Yeah, for us to advance some, so if we know the city, especially a road reconstruction project, right? If Domi, we know Domi is going to advance something like that, we really would love to coordinate and get in there first. But if we don't have that design in hand, which can take up to a year, we're really left without options without asking the city to stall on their project.
The, my, my dream that I will keep saying is that we have about 70% of the paving list kind of set in stone for four or five years. And then 30% of it is for, for council members to, you know, when we have a situation where all of a sudden the street needs absolutely paved this year and we can negotiate on that 30%. That, that's what I, where I would really like to see us go. And I, I, I think Domi agrees with that as well, but we need to, we need to actually, I think, work on some of the right of way programs for them to get to that point. But the way that I see it is that when we pay, when we repair streets, either taxpayers or ratepayers are paying for it. So let's try to do it as few times as humanly possible. Those are, those are both of our constituents. So we'd like to see that. The other question I had for you is something that we don't hear a whole lot in our offices, but we do hear from developers about difficulties with permitting and PWSA. And that continues to be a problem. The, the delays in, in permitting, you know, we hear it a lot from zoning and a lot from Domi and a lot from, I think you're probably the, the third most. Have, have, when is the last time that PWSA took a hard look at its, its permitting process and what could be done to expedite or, or work through problems that someone is looking to build something might have?
Sure. I would say maybe a little over two years ago is when we looked at restructuring, kind of who, who was doing the review, what that process looked like in terms of our pre-development meeting and the structure of the communications. I know, you know, both with the Councilwoman's district and yourself, we've had some very challenging development sites that are, you know, I would love to say they're all unique, but I think some of those ones generate a lot of attention where there's more than a typical, hey, you need to move this catch basin or service line or fire hydrant kind of thing. I think, I think generally, and you all can share if I'm wrong, I think we have a fairly good process for that. It's when we have large diameter water sewer assets where developers are proposing to move or build close to and, and even, you know, sometimes over top of and things like that, that we just, it seems like there's been a little bit more of that in recent history where we need to go back and look at our policies to determine exactly how we respond. And I think that has slowed some things down because we just didn't have a script, which we're developing now because we kind of have some experience now going through those development sites. But I'd be happy to take a look and maybe work through if there are specific instances where we feel like we kind of dropped the ball or, or weren't communicating. Our suggestion is always reach out to us sooner, even if it's a conceptual development to get that pre-development meeting so we can become aware of the development. And if they're the sort of non-starter, hey, this is a critical piece of infrastructure, you really need to design around it, having that conversation sooner before it, you know, financing has been locked in and things like that. And when we're the last approval in the process, it's a lot more painful. So certainly interested in advancing that conversation with you to see, and we want to provide customer service to our development community that are essential. In a lot of these instances, they're adding more customers, which is something we're interested in financially and we want the city to grow. So I appreciate you flagging that and let's keep that conversation going.
Yeah, and I, I want to kind of set aside the, the project, the latest project that we've been talking about, which I think is a, a bowl of spaghetti underneath a parking lot of utilities. Seems to be the most complicated site in America to build on. Looks, looks like it should be the easiest.
Right, right.
But, but is probably the most difficult. But, but hearing from other developers about some, some of the challenges that they've had with PWSA. And even in terms of what permits cost and, and your permit rates, being able to price that in, you know, early and, and when things change in your, your permitting fees, making sure that they're at the table for those changes and understanding what, what is happening there. I don't have all the specifics. I'm not a developer myself, but it is something that, you know, when I, we do talk with them, it's something that, that we hear about, the, the challenges there. So it is something that, that I'd like to see, you know, take a, take a hard look at. You mentioned the pre-development meetings. Now is, is that, is that a separate meeting from when zoning or planning wants to meet with a developer for a pre-development meeting?
It is. It's a Pittsburgh Water specific. We, we participate in the, I forget the exact term. I believe they're still being held to the large development meetings that are, are run by more of the city. So we're a partner, so we're aware of things very large coming down the pipe. But yeah, we have a, you can even schedule it directly from the website. If a, you know, big or small developer is thinking about something, we will get our team of engineers together with theirs and can talk through the site conditions and things to be aware of.
Yeah, that's good to know. If, as things happen, I'll send them your way, so.
Sounds good. Happy to do it. Thanks for flagging that.
I really appreciate it again. I think as a, as an authority, one of the things that I, I talk about a lot is like restoring the faith in government. And I think that, you know, you've done a, done a fantastic job and hope that everyone else can follow your lead. So thank you.
Thank you for the kind words.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Strasburger, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have too many questions for you. I, you know, am fortunate to sit on the board of Pittsburgh Water and so therefore, you know, have, have received the full briefings from the, about the capital budget and the operating budget and get to peek on the inside. But I'll just say, so I think this is going to be mostly just me talking about how much, how great I think Pittsburgh Water is briefly though. I want to acknowledge that everything that council members see from their vantage point in their offices is also true when you peek under the hood. It's, you know, the fact that we have a really, that Pittsburgh Water has a really robust environmental compliance and ethics program, right? Like among the best that I've ever experienced. Um, that customer service, there's been like an investment in customer service and it's a very concerted, concerted effort to hire the best and, and, you know, then hire the social workers to go out and ensure that people who need customer assistance programs are receiving it in a proactive manner and, you know, you name it, like there's been an investment in it. And it's, um, to the credit of the leadership team here and, and others, um, that that's, that that's true. And I want to mention that, you know, it, I just want to acknowledge it would have been incredibly easy to do what I would say is like the, the popular work of investing in what was disinvested in or which experienced disinvestment over the decades. Um, I mean, what I wish we had here was the chart, and I know you're not looking to, to make a, a case in this, you're not looking to win an argument, but just the investment, um, say ten years ago versus today, I mean, the chart just jumps in the amount that we've, of revenue that the Pittsburgh Water has received and the investment, um, and expenditures. And, um, it would have been really easy to say, okay, we're just gonna, you know, take it from like a one percent, you know, replacement rate to a two percent or, or five percent or something like that, maybe not easy, but it would have, it, it could, would have been easy to focus solely on the water and sewer infrastructure in neighborhoods. And kick the big infrastructure down the road, but it, but you haven't. You've tackled and you've taken on what we, what was the ABC project, the water reliability plan, um, taking, you know, the water treatment plant, the Brecken pump station, the Clearwell project. What's the total cost of that in the end?
About five hundred million.
Five hundred million dollars and, and date of like twenty thirty-two. And taking it on while doing all those other things. And I just want to acknowledge like it's, it's like, um, it's like, you know, the project on your house that no one's ever sees, but you have to do it. And it's going to make it better for everyone and create the redundancy in the system and create the, the, the real reliability to allow people to, um, you know, without even thinking about it, continue to have confidence that they'll be served with clean freshwater. So, um, just want to acknowledge that, oh, just a lot of the things that I see from my vantage point as Vice Chair of Pittsburgh Water that maybe, you know, there are other council members or the public doesn't get to see, that it's, it's, you know, there will always be pain points, there will always be experiences that some customers have that isn't perfect, but, um, but on the whole and on the average, as Councilperson Charlin said, it's such a vast improvement, even just from council offices perspective. Um, from the number of people who were calling council offices on a daily basis, on an hourly basis, say ten years ago to now, where it's, it's pretty few and far between. It's as good on the inside as it is, you know, from the experience as a council member. So, thank you, thank you for your work. It's, I'm super proud, it's one of the proud, you know, one of the, my favorite, um, um, kind of hats that I wear as a councilperson is to be Vice Chair of, of Pittsburgh Water and thanks for the work that you do and your team does every day.
Thank you for being on our board.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, that's all, that's all. Those are all my questions.
Yeah, and I, I thank you and, um, and I just have a, a, a few, uh, questions, but I do want to, um, you know, follow, uh, in, in, in the, in the, in the remarks of, of my colleague, Councilwoman Strausberger, as far as, you know, some thank yous, you know, I want to thank you for your team, the response. I want to echo all of my members, uh, well deserved props that your team gets for, um, just the quick responses, you know, from Rachel to Rebecca and everyone, you know, who's, you know, always Johnny on the spot. You know, when we reach out and I want to thank you for, for your response and your leadership and, and, and supporting, um, the work I've had to do and, and the work that I'm also coordinating with Councilwoman Strausberger and Council President Lavelle on dealing with the situation with the MB affordable properties. Um, you know, and your empathy and understanding the complexity to that situation. You know, um, I, I can't thank you enough for that. And I want to thank you for your ongoing education about uh, letting me know exactly where the Pittsburgh Water jurisdiction ends. And, and, and the Wilkensburg Penn joint begins in Homewood, you know, it's the ongoing process of me reaching out to you about something in Homewood. It's like, oh, that's not us, that's Wilkensburg Penn joint, so. I thank you for the ongoing geography lessons as well. Um, I just have just a couple, uh, questions before we wrap up. You know, a couple kind of micro, you know, issues and then some thirty thousand foot stuff as well. Uh, you know, one thing that, that comes to mind when I think about Pittsburgh Water is I do get a number of calls. I know, uh, Councilwoman Gross, you know, would attest to this as well, about water pressure. Um, in Garfield, uh, and Bloomfield in particular, and my question really isn't about, you know, addressing specifically those issues. But you, do, do we, do we have an understanding of, you know, of what causes, you know, certain areas of the city to have a lower water pressure than others? And you, do you have a sense of, you know, what, what are the remedies for that?
We, we do, a lot of it has to do with, uh, the, the different pressure system that neighborhoods are fed from, whether it be a tank or reservoir or pump station. Um, and there's also a fair amount of variability within the neighborhood on the, the size of the building. So a lot of our standards and, and our team probably shared, shared this with you are based on the water pressure coming into the property, which may meet the state standards. However, if a large property has been subdivided, subdivided into a multi-unit building, maybe three or four floors up, that may not be enough pressure to get that shower with, you know, a significant pressure up, up there on those top floors. So there's some, some property specific variability, but we have, um, identified some, some weaker points within the system that may not raise to a compliance level, but may raise to a customer service improvement level that we have flagged for future investment. What it would look like would be things like booster pump stations to, to, to try to provide that extra pressure. We can actually make some changes within the system to, to move pressure zones, so trying to get them served from other parts of the system with higher pressure. Uh, those solutions require sort of multi-year design and planning and can't happen overnight. But I know that we've been in discussions internally about trying to address those, you know, particularly the repeated problem zones, and there's a commercial corridor in your district, I believe, that
Correct.
that has expressed that concern, so it's certainly on our radar. Um, there's often not a quick fix, sometimes there can be. So, you know, if there is anyone out there, whether it be a residential customer or a, um, commercial property that's having a pressure issue, please do share that with us so we can look. We actually have what we call a water model that is really just a simulation of our system where we can try to find those problem areas and, and maybe through turning a valve in a strategic location can, can address them fairly quickly. So it's a, it, a mixture, but I believe the, you know, the, the the ones that are repeated or require sort of that multi-year level of investment in, in research and change in design.
Yeah, and I thank you for that. I definitely look forward to working with you, you know, as the reconstruction of Penn Avenue, you know, continues on and uh, I'm sure, uh, Councilwoman Gross and the District Seventeen will be working closely with us as well. Uh, my second question was around, you know, your general thoughts around a climate resilient strategy, uh, like my, uh, like several of my other colleagues have worked a lot in the environmental space before coming on council. Um, it's always, you know, a concern for me and obviously water, you know, is, is, is in some ways maybe the most valuable, you know, environmental resource maybe other than oxygen. Um, you know, so from a, a thirty thousand foot level, you know, how, how do you, how do y'all think about um, your climate resilient strategy being that water plays such a role and we know that, you know, as you know, um, the climate crisis, you know, continues on, um, you know, we're, you know, regions like ours are, you know, uh, you know, are going to become more attractive, you know, for populations, you know, not only in America, but all, all over the world. Um, so as you think about, you know, the next fifty years, um, I know that's looking into the future, but you know, what is kind of the climate resilient strategy? Um, for Pittsburgh Water?
Well, well, first, have a move here, we have plenty of water. So, let's, we'll, we'll take everyone from the world here in the city, we'd love to see that growth. Um, it, it is, you know, we, we touched so much between our water sewer and stormwater systems, just, uh, maybe it was two weeks ago, a week ago, I'm losing track of time. Councilwoman Strausberger joined us for an announcement that we made with Duquesne Lake Company about our resilience strategy and making sure that we don't lose a power to our water treatment plant where our key pump stations are located. Because, you know, the, the, the energy use is a key component of our resilience, resiliency strategy. And there are parts within our system, um, that if we didn't have power only in a, in a matter of a few minutes, we're having service impacts, whether it's low pressure or no water. So we're focused on trying to eliminate those locations where we know, um, that, you know, a power out, whether it's help from Duquesne Light, like we received at the plant to get a redundant feed into it or backup generation, uh, we have mobile pumps and generators that we can use in a pinch, making sure that we have those plans in place because, you know, energy and, and water just has a really close nexus in terms of resiliency. We're also going through a planning process, part of it is mandated by EPA to take a look at our resiliency strategy and, and look at the components in our system that will have, you know, if they were to fail, the most widespread impact. And we're taking a look at those to make sure that we're make, we're investing in them or that at least we have a backup plan if something were to, to come offline. So, you know, a lot of that is focused on the drinking water side. However, we do have sewer pump stations that when they're not operable, that, um, it turns into a, a, what we call an SSO, so a sewage overflow where it's not even necessarily combined with, with stormwater. So a really ugly situation. We want to prioritize those pump stations. And then stormwater in our, what we call our wet weather planning is really focused on the, the extreme wet weather events that, that we can have. We have these microburst events, um, in, that have hit neighborhoods repeatedly and we've seen sewer backups and localized flooding, things like that. We want to prioritize our investments on the stormwater side in those areas. We have a good sense of where the, the highest risk neighborhoods are, kind of based on topography and history. So, you know, our stormwater program is designed to, to be involved there. I know we're working with our planning director to look at the citywide plan to see how we can focus or, or at least bring in threads of water resiliency into the citywide. I'll ha- I think it's the All Hazards Mitigation Plan. Um, so we're having those, uh, conversations with Director Bay, who's also on our Board of Directors. Um, so it's sort of endless touch points on the, the climate resiliency end, but we're trying our best to, to keep on top of all of it. And we do have a, um, safety and security department that is looking at, at these risks at holistically with help from a consultant. And that's, you know, relatively new for us to even have that department and put those resources toward it. Because, you know, we recognize the importance of it, like you mentioned in your comments.
Uh, I truly, I truly appreciate it. And along those lines of, um, climate resiliency and environmental stewardship, can you talk a little bit about the, the green infrastructure work that, that you're doing? I know, you know, in the presentation, you know, I saw one of the projects that's in District Nine and I know that in conversations with the Urban Redevelopment Authority, I know you're all looking at a parcel on, on Dallas, um, in, in Homewood that can't be developed for anything else to be used for, uh, green infrastructure demonstration projects. You could, could talk a little bit about, um, the types of projects that you're doing that fall within the green infrastructure category?
Sure, it, it is a combination of, um, strategically looking at sites, the one you referenced where it doesn't really have a development, uh, potential, but could be a great way to store or slow down stormwater. Um, we're taking a look at those locations, we're actually partnering with a nonprofit to look at vacant properties kind of more largely across the city to prioritize potential locations for a green stormwater infrastructure project. Um, we have a, over a dozen installed since twenty seventeen or so. We actually had the board out for a tour of many of those locations here within the last month or so. Uh, so, you know, we, we're trying to look, depending on the, the nuisance issues, some of the issues we're looking at are really more related to, to flooding or backups. But some are a little more holistic and we're trying to remove flow from our sewers so that we don't have combined sewer overflows. We will, we are, I've been saying this, I think every time I've testified at city council, we're negotiating a consent decree with US EPA for, uh, a wet weather approach. It should be in addition to what Alka-San is doing for their deep tunnel program to prevent combined sewer overflows. And so depending on some of that consent decree work, we're going to look to see if utilizing green stormwater infrastructure is, is, you know, really what we'd have to be building as part of that decree. So we should have a lot more to say here in the next year or so about what that program will look like.
Yeah, thank you for that. And, and, and my last question was, I know you mentioned, um, that the goal, um, you know, i- is to replace all the lead service lines in, in the system by, by twenty twenty-seven, just from a raw number standpoint, ballpark figure, like how many lead lines is that?
So we have replaced over twelve thousand public lead service lines. And, um, if we encounter lead service lines on the private side in that same work, we'll replace that as well. Um, we are also replacing, even if we have private only lead lines, that lead service line. So the math becomes a little, little tricky to explain. But we know that we're well over halfway there. What we can't definitively say because the inventory is just incomplete and old is how many left do we have to get? But we do have, uh, we know that we have thousands of more locations to at least visit and verify whether or not they have lead remaining. So we think with, within the next three years, we can at least get our arms around those locations. Uh, it could be another ten thousand, it could be something much lower, like seven or eight thousand. It's really been, uh, unfortunately, a guessing game of how much lead is still out there. But we are visiting each location block by block, whether we're there physically and excavating or looking through our historical records and mapping those locations. Uh, customers may have noticed, we also sent out a, a mailer to anyone that had an unknown, unknown location according to our records in the DEP standards, or if they had lead according to our records. And if anything in that letter, uh, based on what we shared, looked different than what the, the customer is aware of, we want them to call us so we can update our records. So I know Director McDevitt's going to give us a phone call so we can update our records based on what we sent him. Um, but it's important and actually, you know, if, if customers do provide us that data, they can take a picture inside their basement. That saves us a trip for one of our contractors or plumbers to come out and do that work. So it's kind of participatory, uh, you know, public infrastructure work that we would love to hear from folks about.
Right, and, and, and I do want to just also thank, thank you for, for working with our office, um, you know, to reach out to residents, you know, because obviously, you know, residents have to give permission. Um, you know, to, to, to make those changes. I also want to thank Councilwoman Strausberger for working with me, you know, when I was, you know, a freshly new councilperson, even though I'm, you know, me and, and Councilperson Charlotte are still pretty new. Um, you know, we worked together on a project that I think Councilperson Charlotte would be really excited about where we actually were able, through the leadership and, and, and the experience of Councilperson Strausberger to, you know, synchronize with Duquesne Light, PW, I said, well, who was PW I say at that?
Yeah, right, you're safe.
You know, and, and Domi, um, to do the, you know, the, the replacement of, of a concrete street with um, the utility lines all on synchronization. And that work was completed, you know, this summer and I actually hand delivered a couple of letters. Um, you know, a, after your urging to a couple of homeowners, um, in Point Breeze to let them know that this work was being done and they had to grant permission, um, you know, for the work to happen. So it was a great example of, of all that, of Councilwoman Charlotte's, you know, grand vision coming together and, and one small example of Point Breeze. So hopefully we can replicate that, um, around the city. But then, thank you so much for your presentation. Uh, do any of my colleagues have, have any, uh, follow-up questions? Well, thank you so much. Um, you know, I know we're, we're getting, we're getting close to, to a Wednesday that's going to feel like a Friday tomorrow, so. I don't, I don't want to, um, let this fake Thursday, uh, go on, uh, too much longer. So if there are no further questions, can we have a motion to recess this meeting?
To move.
Second.
We are in recess.